This conference will now be recorded.
I forgot how loud that got up here, so apologize. Everybody, check your ears. Make sure you don't have ruptured eardrums. I apologize. Wilmer City Council will now be called to order for Monday, June 7th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is that I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll ask for a little patience with our staff and with the council as we have not met in this room for some time, so we may have some glitches to get used to, so just work with us. Also, this evening, we will be working the first part of the meeting without a city administrator, and so that will cause us a few bumps along the way, if you will, and if that happens, we will work the best that we can between myself, the city clerk, and the city attorney to get the answers that we may need. So with that, are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, I got two.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. I'd like to add John Kellen to the Human Rights Commission.
Okay.
That'd be for information only.
Okay.
And I'd like to move number 20 up to number 11.
And then move everything else down?
Everything else down.
Okay, so the request is to add John Kellen as an applicant to the Human Rights Commission under information, under consent. The other item would be to move item number 20 up to item number 11, so right after item 10, which is where it would be on our agenda. Additional comments or questions? Okay, I didn't hear, tell you a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda with the two changes to the agenda. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have consent items. Ms. Thompson, our city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval: City Council minutes of May 17th, Special City Council minutes of May 13th, Special City Council minutes of May 27th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of May 24th, Planning Commission minutes of May 19th, the council payable report of May 13th through May 26th, Consider State Temporary Liquor Permits for the Wilmer Lakes Rotary Club, Parks and Recreation Board minutes of April 21st, miscellaneous finance reports, committee appointments to the Zoning Appeals Board of Carol Laumer and Dylan Erickson-Thomke, and Planning Commission Stephen Dressler. For council's acceptance, the building report for the month of May, the Wilmer Lakes Area Convention Visitors Bureau minutes of April 20th. For council's information, a committee appointment to the Human Rights Commission of Jonathan Dahl, and also, Councilmember Fagerly added John Kellen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent items as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Ask.
I'd like to pull C, the minutes from the May 27th meeting.
Councilmember Osmus.
I'd like to pull aye, the miscellaneous finance reports.
Additional comments? Motion has been made in seconded to approve consent items, absent item C and item aye. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Councilmember Ask.
Yeah, the minutes under Resolution 2021-120, it states that Councilmember Butterfield voted no on a motion regarding the negotiation strategy, and I believe that's incorrect. I believe, from my understanding in a brief conversation with him over email, that he voted aye, but there was a slight delay because he was attending remotely, but he did not vote no, so if we can make that correction, I'd move to file the minutes.
Motion made in second to file the minutes. Second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Discussion. One correction made to the minutes, most of them made in seconded. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Osmus.
I had a question on some April financial report expenditures, and the first one is on page 64 in our packet.
And are you addressing this to a finance director?
Yes, and maybe we discussed this and I just need to be refreshed, but under, and both of these have to do with the wastewater treatment plant. If there was somebody else that wanted to address it, but we have, that we replaced the boilers for $36,576, and we did not have a budget for that, and I was wondering where that was coming from.
Mr. O'Kens.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that would have to come from other expenditures or budgeted capital improvements. I did not have a conversation with the superintendent at the waste team or the public works director, so I could certainly do that as a follow-up. Your question?
That would be great. I was just wondering if they had a plan, if it was something else that they weren't going to purchase that was going to purchase this, or how it was that we thought we were going to come up with $36,000.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as past practice, they would have to cover that through other capital expenditures by not purchasing those items.
Okay, and then the same thing on page 65, there was a pressure washer for $7,726.28, and that also was not budgeted, and I was wondering how we were covering that.
I know there were a number of projects that they delayed for various reasons that were communicated through the public works director. I would guess that was the same situation, and I will do a follow-up on that question as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll move to have them approved.
Second. Motion made in seconded to approve the miscellaneous financial reports. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
So we'll get something to follow up on either next time, or?
I will do a follow-up email. That way you will get the information on a more current basis.
Thank you.
Okay, we should get that information back to the public, too, because the meeting was, so can it get added to the minutes when we do our minutes?
The minutes.
Is that fine with you, Councilmember Osmus?
That's just fine.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call. That's a roll call, correct?
It's money, finance.
No, it's a simple motion. It deals with money, that's why I thought it should be...
We're still supposed to be doing roll calls, because we haven't had that item changed on the charter as of yet.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
We're still doing roll calls because we have not had the item addressed formally in the charter for simple motions versus resolutions and ordinances.
This isn't an ordinance, though. Mr. Scott.
Mayor, members of the council, I think, for this item, you're simply receiving a report, and I think a simple motion would be fine for that.
Okay. Motion made in seconded, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries, with follow-up to come in our next packet. Next, we have a public hearing for the assessment for the 2021 improvements. This will be conducted by Mr. Vogi. I'm going to kill your name, and I apologize, but you can correct me and I'll just keep killing it, so. Jared, thanks for being here. I'll open the public hearing at this time.
All right. Good evening, mayor, council, Jared Vogi, here tonight to present the 2021 Street Improvements Assessment Hearing. So ultimately, the purpose of the hearing tonight is to explain the assessment costs associated with the various projects that are proposed to be assessed. This is not the, not to be confused with the improvement hearing, which was conducted on January 19th, which ultimately described the improvement, so this is more of the assessment portion of the project. So the project schedule, as you can see, I mentioned the improvement hearing that was conducted in January. Obviously, we're here tonight at the assessment hearing. Should everything continue to move forward with council action this evening? The construction is anticipated to start on the improvements this month or in July, and then the final completion date associated with the project is September 25th of 2021. So that's the anticipated project schedule. The next graph that you see before you is essentially the last 10 years of the assessments associated, or the assessments that have been levied on projects of two different types. One is the reconstruction type, the second is the overlay. As you can see, overlay costs are less than the reconstruction, and that's simply because of the amount of work that goes into that. Overlay is typically just involve the pavement. Reconstructions involve the water main, sanitary sewer, full street section reconstruction, so that's the difference you'll see there. So for the last three years, the assessment rate per foot for the reconstruction portion has been $85. You'll see that that has moved to 90 this year as a result of costs and bid prices received. The second one I wanted to point out was the overlay cost historically for the last three years, it's been at 45. 2020, one is being proposed at 50, and again, based on the bids received. So the assessment schedule, and one of the questions we get a lot is, what is the schedule for the assessments? When is it going to go on my taxes and things of that nature? So this slide really breaks that down for council and the members of the audience. So in September, a reminder notice will be sent out to all the property owners indicating that their assessments, or partial prepayment assessments are allowed prior to October 31st, so that's without interest. So by October 31st of 2021, any resident with an assessment can pay a portion of that assessment off without interest, and then the remaining balance would be applied to the property taxes. Residents also have the option of paying the entire assessment amount in full without interest prior to October 31st. So any remaining balance of an assessment that is not paid prior to October 31st will be certified to Candioi County, placed on the property tax records, and then the first payment will be collected with property taxes on the May 15th property tax deadline date, and then the second half would be the October 15th date. So then, in 2022, not 2021, but in 2022, each year after 2021, residents will have the option of doing prepayments on their assessments in the minimum amount of $1,500. So if in 2022 comes along, residents decide, I want to pay some more off of this, they'll have the option to do that with interest. So the projects that have previously been approved and discussed at the improvement hearing are the 2101A project, which is the Second Street Southeast, or Olina Avenue to Becker Avenue. That total project cost is just shy of $2.1 million, and it's noted there on the screen. 2101B project total, which is Eagle Ridge Drive East, from 37th to 8th, is $1,087,587.90. And then the third project that's being considered for assessments this evening is the 2103A project, which is the overlay of First Street, or the extension of the overlay project that was initiated last year and completed, and that's from 19th Avenue to Wilmer Avenue. That total project cost of $651,620.81. So if you add up all the projects, total cost is $3,838,800, plus or minus a couple dollars based on rounding. So you can see that total right there before you. The property owner's share of the total 3.8 million is $938,000, or approximately 24.5% of the total project cost. And you'll see there that the city shares the vast majority of that. And again, as the chart that we looked at previously identified, the reconstruction assessment per foot is $90, and the overlay assessment per foot is $50. And so with that, mayor and council, I'll pause for any questions that you might have, or members of the public.
Okay, are there any members from the public on the call-in who wish to address the council on the assessment hearing for either of the two projects? Thank you. Are there any members of the public that...
Mr. Mayor, we have no calls from the public at this time.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the assessment hearing for 2021? If you are, please stand and state your name for the record, along with your address. Come to the mic, please. State your name and your address for the record.
Allison Papenfuss, 3412 Eagle Ridge Drive East.
Okay.
And my main question was whether or not, in this letter that I got, talked about a 4.3% interest rate, and I was just wondering, is that a fixed rate throughout the whole 10 years? Because this letter does not indicate, it only indicates it through that first payment. So it left it very vague as to whether or not that is the rate that would be for the whole life of the loan. That 4.3 is the fixed rate for the entire...
Correct, it's 4.3% of the balance for the entire 10 years.
Okay.
Correct.
Because that was not, that's the whole reason why I'm here, because that was not clear. It only indicates it for the first year. And on the front page, it says this time period to be determined percent, so that also made me question. So it's just hard to make a good judgment as to whether or not to prepay, because I don't know what the full term might be with interest at the end of the 10 years.
Attorney Scott, can you help us with this a little bit? And then can you make sure that this gets recorded so that we correct the problem on the two pages?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure exactly what the notice said, but I do believe your answer was correct, which is the interest rate remains the same throughout the period of the assessment until it's paid off.
Finance Director?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. That is an interest rate that will remain the entire length of the assessment, and that is a maximum amount of the interest rate.
And so, so someone needs to review that document. It appears that that document's not clear. It probably should say annual interest rate rather than just total interest rate. I think that's the basis of your question, is that correct? Because if it's 4.3% for 10 years, it's different than if it's 4.3% per year.
It said the first year's interest will be charged at a rate of 4.3%, calculated on the full principal amount from the date of the sale through December 31st, 2022, approximately 18 months. Which, I mean, I've refinanced my home several times, we've lived a bunch of homes, and so I'm not going to sign off on a loan until I know and can calculate all the interest I would pay over the course of it. And because it said to be determined on the front, just made me pause. So I just wanted more information.
I apologize that that notice went out without the proper information on it. We'll make sure it's corrected for the future.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Well, if you do make a informed decision, thank you.
Right, yep, no problem. Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? State your name and your address, please.
I'm Carrie Mobley, and I'm at 3312 Eagle Ridge Drive East, and the road needs to be replaced. There's no overlay. I'm a daughter of a construction worker. So my concern is that I am at the bottom of the hill of the construction project, so they're redoing the roads on both sides to the bottom of the hill to take it through the water system, and I'm curious if it's been addressed that the sewer system's going to be able to handle the water once it gets there. October 1st of this fall, my car was totaled sitting on that road with water. Do you want me to pass these?
You can hand to the city clerk if you'd like us to view it.
Thank you. That's about, that's about 27, 27 feet up from the furthest down drain pipe, and then we've also had water, here's a picture of my house, 60 feet up to my house, we've had water within a foot of my window multiple times. And so I'm concerned that if they make it more efficient for the water to come down and drain into the, into the water pipes and go to the pond or the overflow in our backyard, that it's not, that it's going to be able to handle that water and not flood my basement.
Okay.
That's opposed to my house. That's the distance, 60 feet. Thank you.
So if you want to step aside, we'll have Mr. Vogi answer the question. Mr. Vogi, her question is, is that, seeing that she's at the base of where the water comes from both sides, is the storm sewer adequately sized to handle the water? If there is an increased flow, number one, and number two, if it isn't, is there a plan to correct that?
Yeah, so as part of the Eagle Ridge Drive improvements, additional storm sewer and piping has been added to that project as a result of some drainage concerns in that area. So there is additional infrastructure being added to accommodate that, so, and we'll double, double-check calculations, so, but yes, there's additional storm sewer added for that.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have opposition to the assessment, or did you just have that? Okay. Additional comments or questions to either project? Seeing in here. Yes, ma'am. I can state your name and address.
Allison Papenfuss, 3412 Eagle Ridge Drive East. So we were just wanting to see if he covers it, want to make sure he covers what, where we're supposed to park, because many of those homes back up to the golf course, and are there going to be weeks where we just can barely get in and out, and are we going to get notice of those things? You know, people have travel and house service, if you're trying to, so we would just like to have a good timeline, and if we have an issue, who do we call? So we're just anticipating a lot of havoc, especially when you have teenage drivers and a lot of cars, you're trying to get it in and out, so...
Certainly. So the goal is to have it accessible every day to your address? That's the goal?
On the whole.
On the whole piece?
Front, back, whatever.
Yep, front, back, bottom, whatever. Yep, we try to get you access to it. If that is not possible, we will notice you and let you know how long we anticipate that to be. Now, if there's an unforeseen event that happens, in other words, we've got the road opened up and we have heavy rain, it wasn't forecasted, it just, I mean, it's Minnesota, right? It's not supposed to be 95 degrees today, but it is. So if that happens, then understand you have to work with us, but we will work with you as well to accommodate access into your space, into your driveway, or wherever you need to get. And Jared, if that's not correct, let me know that I'm not speaking correctly, so, but we'll try to get you in every night.
Well, that was a very big question mark at our HOA meeting.
Correct, yeah.
It was a packed meeting, and everybody had the same question, and I'm the only one I think that showed up.
Sure. Right. Well, we did receive emails on it, and I did have a conversation with a couple of, with your homeowners representative, and I had the city attorney and city staff look at that, and there was an option that was presented that would, would have been an increased cost, and at that time, the homeowners association wasn't willing to incur that increased cost, so that option was not bid, so. So it was addressed from the homeowners association. We had staff at your meeting, so...
Well, I just meant that we would be notified and given some...
Yep.
It was just all of a question mark.
No, we will notify you, you will, and if you have any trouble, call City Hall, and if you don't get an answer there, your council representatives are, Michael Bryan down on the end over there, he will help you, and then we have Andrew Plowman, who's not here. So do you know Andrew Plowman? Both of them, both of them will address your concerns. If you don't get an answer from them, you can reach out to me.
Okay. Well, I think I'm speaking on behalf of a dozen neighbors.
I had two conversations yesterday, so yes, yes.
So I'll pass that along, thank you very much.
You bet, no problem at all. Jared, did I speak correctly there?
Yes.
Okay, we have a letter to read to the record.
Dear council members, please consider this letter our formal objection to the proposed assessments for the street and other improvement projects for parcel 959238640. The assessment is inequitable to the property owners that have to pay a share when the street is used by all of the citizens in addition to travelers from outside of Wilmer. We are fortunate to be working our way out of the recent global pandemic. However, the economic impacts of the event were significant, and the recovery will be long-term. In order for us to continue this recovery as swiftly as possible and without any further loss, we are in need of the Wilmer City Council's full support in waiving this assessment fee. Sincerely, Tommy Stewart, Rockstep Wilmer LLC, Chief Operating Officer.
Okay, that's been read into the record. Any additional comments, either by phone or in person, on the assessment hearing? Not seeing anything? I believe that the two people present did not have a formal objection to the assessment, they just had some clarification, but we do have a formal objection from Rockstep. Counsel, you have to make a ruling on that assessment. I will refer to the city attorney, so he will guide you in how that, you could either answer the question, or how a motion would be, should be structured. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. On the objection, while we are in the public hearing, the council's options are to either deny the objection and approve the assessment as it has been proposed on the assessment roll, grant the objection, and either reduce the proposed amount of the assessment, or I suppose eliminate it entirely, or if the council doesn't believe it has sufficient information to do either, you would be able to continue this hearing just with respect to this property that Rockstep has objected on until your next council meeting on June 21st. Perhaps Mr. Vogi has information on the specific assessment, excuse me, on the specific objection to the proposed assessment for Rockstep's property. I believe from the city clerk, the proposed assessment amount was in the neighborhood of $37,000. I can get you the exact number.
Mr. Vogi.
Good evening again, mayor and council. The amount, I believe, as Attorney Scott indicated, was in that $37,000 range. Ultimately, Rockstep has approximately 789 linear feet of frontage along that property at an assessment rate of $50 a foot that totals that assessment amount. They have three major accesses into the property, and their assessment frontage and footage was calculated the same as all the other properties along there, including ACM, Sea Carers Health, who has 900 and plus feet of frontage, so that's, that's how the assessment was put together, and I'll pause there.
Counsel, what are your wishes? So we have the choice of continuing the public hearing on this item only, on this property, and approving the rest of the properties. We have the ability to reduce the assessed amount, we have the ability by either a percentage or a dollar amount, or we have the ability to hold the assessment as it is presented. Counsel, it is your decision.
I'll make a motion to deny the objection.
Second.
Motion made in second to deny the objection from Rockstep based on their assessment. Additional comments or questions?
Can I say something?
Are you, is this a roll call?
This is a roll call, mayor.
Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The motion is denied. Ma'am, go ahead. Again, come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Carrie Mobley, 3312 Eagle Ridge Drive East, and it just says that the assessment for me is 6,000, it's not 3,700, it's 6,000.
We're talking about a different piece? We're talking about a different piece?
No wonder. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. We're talking about Rockstep properties? Yes. That's why I didn't allow you to speak when we had a motion on the floor. Yes. Additional comments or questions from the public? I will close the public hearing, bring, the public hearing and bring to the council table. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution for the assessment roll for twenty, twenty-one.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the assessment, uh, roll for twenty-twenty-one for the improvement. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmiss?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we'll open a public hearing. And those in attendance, if you wish to stay, you certainly may. Uh, if, uh, if we've covered your issue that you have, you certainly can, um, feel free to leave. You won't offend us if you stand up and walk out, so we've had people do that to us before. Okay, next we have the vacation of city easements in Waterview Business Park. Dr. Ramstead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, we have a petition, uh, has been made by Dunick Development, uh, for the city of Wilmer to vacate all of its drainage utility and other easements on property legally described as lots two, three, four, and five, lot, uh, block one, the Waterview Business Park. Uh, the petition has been reviewed and approved as deformed by the planning and development staff, city engineer, and city attorney. The Waterview Business Park is an old minor subdivision plat. It will no longer be in use and will be superseded by a new survey and city-approved easements to accommodate the approved development of the Preserve and Twenty-Fourth Multifamily Housing Development. Resolution approving the vacation will be conditioned on the city's approval of the developer's recording of a replat dedicating new easements satisfactory to the city and WMU, Wilmer Municipal Utilities, in connection to the anticipated development. All property owners and residents within six hundred feet of the above-described property have been notified of the public hearing in the West Central Tribune, and, uh, also, uh, notices were sent ten days, uh, prior to this hearing.
Okay, so we have a public hearing, and the request is to vacate properties within the Waterview Business Park to allow the construction of a multifamily, uh, Twenty-Fourth Avenue Preserves. Comments from the public? Did you wish to speak on behalf of Dunick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jason Versteg. I'm a civil engineer with, with Dunick. I don't really have anything to add, except I just want to clarify, I, I'm not sure what I, if I heard that the entire Waterview Business Park plat was to be vacated, and that's not the case. So it's just that, uh, these lots, um, two, three, four, and five of block one, uh, will be vacated. The, the easements within those lots will be vacated, and, and we're working on a, or we've already, um, we're working towards a development on the Preserve on Twenty-Fourth for that, for those lots there. So, uh, new easements will be established as part of, of that development, so.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Anybody else in the public who wishes to speak? I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Counsel, I'm sorry, are there any callers? Okay, I'll bring it to the council table, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at this time.
I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the vacation of city easements in Waterview Business Park, uh, lots two, three, four, and five of block one. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I know I asked this question last time, but I have to ask again because I, I did reach out and, um, just want to convey the concern, um, that with our stormwater, the easements that were there, um, affect the properties to the west, I have been told, and I believe you told me before that the new easements would not be less, or less restrictive than that, or that this would be addressed with the new easements. And so just making sure that we're protecting ourselves from the water issues, I mean, that the easements were created to reduce those and that we're staying with that.
Correct. The, the old easements will go away. They, they basically were, uh, designed to a different configuration of the site. Uh, these new easements will be created with a new periphery and, uh, new access, um, and they will be approved by engineering and WMU and reviewed by our department.
I just want to make sure I, I'm not concerned about that property, I'm concerned about the drainage to the other properties.
Understood.
Okay.
Well noted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional comments or concerns? Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien? Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmiss?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes, or that, uh, vacation passes. Next, we have the, uh, annual stormwater presentation for update and compliance with the MS four permit conditions. Sarah, nice to see you again.
Hi.
Once a year, we get to see you.
That's right.
Once a year, here I am again.
Exactly.
So.
Has anything changed?
Some. I try, I try to bring you something new every year so that it's not just a complete repeat. Some of this will be a repeat, so I'll go through it. This will be available on the city's website for the entire year for anybody, um, public citizens, residents, anybody who's interested that wants to review it, make comments, have questions, anything. My contact information is also on the website, too. So, um, yes, once a year, we're here for our annual stormwater public meeting. Uh, the state of Minnesota, through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, authorizes municipalities such as Wilmer to operate a municipal separate storm sewer system. That's where the MS four comes in, and to discharge stormwater to receiving waters. This authorization is granted via coverage under the state's general permit, the stormwater general permit, the GP, the MS four permit. We use those all interchangeably, I'm sorry. The goal of this permit is to reduce pollutant levels in stormwater and to protect water quality. The most, uh, recent permit was issued in November of twenty-twenty, and they are, permits are good for five years. So in accordance with our coverage under that permit, um, Wilmer has established and maintains a stormwater pollution prevention program. Another requirement of the permit is to hold an annual public meeting to provide the public, uh, the opportunity to provide input on the adequacy of our stormwater pollution prevention program. Like I said, this presentation will be available on the city's website anytime the public might want to go back to it, or if you have questions and want to refer, uh, residents to that, you can. There were several significant changes included in the most recent version of the state's, uh, stormwater general permit, so staff will be working to ensure that we implement those changes to our SWIP over the next twelve months. So, all that to say, what is an MS four? That's the municipal separate storm sewer system. It's the conveyance system that the city owns that, uh, discharges stormwater to waters of the US. So that's all of our curb and gutter, our storm drain system, all of our catch basins, our stormwater ponds, everything that the city owns that conveys all the stormwater. Uh, ours either goes, part of it goes to, uh, Hot Creek, part of it goes down the South Fork Crow River to Wakanda. We are blessed that we sit on two different watersheds. It's not, it can't be a combined sewer system, so it can't be a sanitary sewer and a storm sewer combined system like they did way back in the day, apparently, I've been told. Um, and it's, it's not part of our sewage treatment system or the POTW. So what is stormwater? It's pretty easy. Stormwater, stormwater runoff is just the rain and the snow melt that discharges to our lakes, our rivers, our wetlands. It runs off the impervious surfaces, all those surfaces where it can't soak in and filter through. So roads, sidewalks, roofs, all those things. But it's also not just stormwater and melted snow. Uh, if it was, we wouldn't have a need for this permit, we wouldn't have a need for this program, I wouldn't be here once a year talking to you. So this illustration shows several of the most common pollutants that are mixed in with that rainwater and that snow melt from a typical residential space. And here's a list, um, also, that just conveys some of what's being carried into our lakes and our rivers. Uh, chloride is one, um, from different sources of salt that's been getting more and more attention in the state for the past, you know, five years plus. So that's one that we will talk about in a few more details. So stormwater problems, along with the pollutants that were listed, that were shown, um, that are causing water quality problems, stormwater also brings water quantity problems, and not just the flooding that you all get comments and calls about all the time. Um, those water quantity problems come because when water, when rain or snow melt can't soak in, obviously, it all runs off, and it's running off together, and larger volumes of water are hitting our lakes and our rivers, and especially in those river channels. That extra volume can create in-channel erosion, um, that washes away the stream banks, too. So stormwater runoff is directed to our surface waters, um, and that means that our groundwater resources are also not being recharged like they would have been before we had impervious surfaces like we do now, um, to live our lives the way we like them. So chloride, um, is a pollutant, um, from various salt forms, and that is a concern in Minnesota. So it only takes one teaspoon of salt to permanently pollute five gallons of water, one teaspoon. The amount of salt you usually add to like a cake. That permanently pollutes five gallons of water. So once it's in the water, there's not an easy way to get, uh, the salt out of it. Uh, our freshwater fish and other aquatic life are being impacted along with our drinking water supply. Thirty percent of the monitoring wells in the Twin Cities area, in the shallow aquifers, have chloride concentrations that exceed the water quality standards. Because our stormwater with that chloride gets into our lakes and rivers, uh, that's how it gets to our groundwater, and so that's how our groundwater is being impacted. So how's Wilmer helping? It's not all bad news. It is our responsibility to prevent stormwater from harming Minnesota's valuable water resources, both those surface waters and those groundwater resources, so we have a stormwater pollution prevention program, or a SWIP, as we like to call it, and it covers six different areas of stormwater management. Uh, those six areas, the MPCA likes to refer to them as minimum control measures, MCMs, so you might hear those or see that acronym, too. The first one we'll go over, uh, is illicit discharge detection and elimination. That's a fancy way of saying anything that's not stormwater should not be in your stormwater. So that means if somebody is directly dumping something down a catch basin, that's an illicit discharge. That means if there's a direct connection from our sanitary from years back, um, that's an illicit discharge, too. We need to correct those. It can also be, uh, indirect things, so when our sanitary sewer or our storm sewer deteriorates, uh, then we might have sanitary leaking into our storm sewer systems. So what are we doing? So aside from just keeping our eyes and our ears open with all the city staff, um, once in a while, cities will get complaints from residents, um, that maybe their neighbor is dumping something down a storm drain, things like that. We also are going through, um, in this past year, in twenty-twenty was kind of the first year we did it, and we're smoke testing, um, part of our sanitary sewer. So that means that we just pump smoke, um, into our sanitary sewer system, and we see where it comes out. And if it comes out in places not supposed to be connected to sanitary, that tells us that there could be illicit connections to sanitary or some infiltration happening because of deteriorated systems into our storm sewer. We found both. Um, we had some roof drains that were connected from years and years ago, um, that were connected to our sanitary sewer, so we're making those corrections. Roof drains should go to storm sewer. We, um, also note, in fact, the next slide has, if you can see, those two red arrows are pointing to the smoke that's coming out of the roof drains. We had some great drone footage, um, helping us from Wilmer PD the day we smoke tested. We, uh, also recognized, when we smoke tested, that we had really deteriorated sanitary pipes in an area downtown, and so those are going to be, um, those are going to be corrected by a UV cured-in-place pipelining, um, that you'll have later on. But again, it is the, um, intent to continue to smoke test different portions of both our sanitary and our storm sewer to continue to find these connections or these deteriorated systems. Uh, another, one of the six minimum control measures is construction site stormwater control, uh, so that, um, any construction site in our city that disturbs one acre or more, um, has a permit with the city, and they also provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan for their construction activity, and staff is out there, um, doing site inspections throughout those construction projects, um, during active seasons. There's things they have to do before we go into winter, things like that. Post-construction stormwater management is the third one. Uh, this is to prevent or reduce water pollution after construction activity is complete. So again, on those, um, sites that are one acre or greater, um, or if they are smaller than that, but they are part of a larger common plan of development, then we do require stormwater management, BMPs, permanent BMPs, so they could be infiltration, they could be ponds. Wilmer isn't ideally situated for a lot of infiltration, so we do a lot of capturing and holding in ponds. And, uh, linear projects, road projects are, uh, can be, um, subject to the same requirements. So again, our city owns and maintains a lot of, um, ponds and wetlands and structural stormwater BMPs, and we inspect those annually, we provide maintenance on those, um, the sump drains, the catch basins, things like that. We back out, we clean out the sediment, so that's not being discharged into our surface waters, we can capture that and dispose of that properly. Pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So basically, the city needs to keep a good house, a clean house, um, be good stewards of what we have and good examples. So street sweeping is one of those things that we do. We have two street sweepers in the city. They do a marvelous job. Our staff is top-notch on that. They are out there perfect times, I mean, not quite year-round, but as close as they can. Gary's got them out and identifying the streets that, that needed the worst, and we're really hitting, um, as much as we can with that. We also, last year, sent all of our, um, city snowplow operators and the county snowplow operators to the state's smart salting training. Uh, so that's one of the programs that the state had started more than ten years ago to help reduce chloride throughout the city, or, excuse me, throughout the state. And we, uh, in addition to that smart salting training, a few years ago, began converting over to brine application for our winter street maintenance. And in those three winters, uh, we've been able to reduce our granular salt use by fifty percent. So that, that was a good move on your part, and we should continue to move towards that as much as we can. That's making leaps and bounds difference for us.
Sarah, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Let me go back to that slide. So if we reduced our salt use by nearly fifty percent, how many tons is that? Because you were talking about, you know, one, one teaspoon.
Right.
Uh, pollutes five gallons. I mean, we're talking tons here, right?
Right.
Do we have an idea?
Three hundred tons? Three hundred? Oh, man, there's gone. Yeah, three hundred?
Yeah, we used to be over six hundred, bro. We're down to three, two, three. We're over six hundred.
Wow, good numbers. Thank you so much.
Yeah, incredible. Uh, in fact, when I reported that to the MPCA, they called me, and they were like, "That's a really big number that you're claiming and reducing." And I'm like, "But I have the proof, we did it." Uh, so we should be proud of that. Public education and outreach is the, uh, is another minimum control measure, so we need to share information with the public that informs them about the impacts that stormwater discharges have on water bodies, and then actions that they can take to reduce pollutants. So a couple of years ago, we started a rain barrel cost share program, um, that again, we continue this year, and so we get in a bulk purchase, um, with some other cities and counties in the area, and then we're able to distribute rain barrels in, um, throughout our city for cost. We've been doing the last couple of years, a really strong social media education campaign covering lots of different stormwater topics. Uh, we do the Public Works Open House Event annually where we share some stormwater information. Uh, last year, we did, uh, Nature's Night at the Stingers, um, in August, and so we had about two-hundred-and-seventy-five kids and their parents come through, um, and we did this in collaboration with a few other organizations, too. But they played an interactive stormwater game, they did a wastewater game, they did a beetkeeping thing, we had lots of different organizations there, the kids had a great time, and it was a great way to hit, uh, an audience that we maybe don't usually hit with some of our presentations like this, um, with those school-age kids, so. Uh, and then the final one is, uh, public participation and involvement. So we need to solicit input on our program and involve the public in activities that will improve or protect stormwater. Again, this annual stormwater presentation is one of those ways. It is available on our website. And then another one that we like to highlight is the Adopt a Storm Drain Program. And so, um, you can go to the Adopt a Storm Drain website, and then there's a map, um, of Wilmer, and you can pick a storm drain in your neighborhood, um, one of those catch basins in the street at the corners usually, um, or at the bottom of the hills, and you can just make the pledge to spend fifteen minutes, twice a month, once a week, whatever it is, just cleaning that up. Um, so our street sweeping does a great job, we can't hit every street every day. Um, stormwater brings in lots of trash, lots of leaves, lots of grass clippings. Stormwater brings in lots of trash, lots of leaves, lots of grass clippings, lots of random other things. So just collecting that, you know, using a rake or a shovel and a five-gallon bucket or a wheelbarrow is a really great way that we can keep all of that directly out of our surface waters. So take that away, dispose of it properly, whether that's in the trash or brush sites, depending on what it is. And then on that website, you can actually report how much you collect, too. And you can see throughout the state how much of that debris, how many pounds of it and pounds of pollution that we're keeping out of our stormwater statewide. So that is kind of cool. And then what else can homeowners do? So here's just a list of some of the other things that homeowners can do, that, some things we haven't talked about. When you're mowing, mow in. Don't let your grass clippings blow out into the street, please. Planting a rain garden, we have staff. The county SWCD also has great staff that can help with that. There's often cost share money available. Using less salt on sidewalks, picking up pet waste, that helps. Using less fertilizer. You can grab samples of your soil and your lawn if you feel like you think you need some fertilizer or some help on why it's not growing like you want and send that to the U of M Extension Lab and they'll tell you exactly what you need and what you don't need. Much of our Minnesota soil is naturally high in phosphorus, so we don't need to be adding phosphorus to it. You can wash your vehicles on the grass instead of on the driveway because then all that water can soak into your grass and then it doesn't wash off other things from the driveway, from the streets, the detergents and things don't go with it. And then just don't use more water than you need because that runs off, right? So that's what is part of our stormwater problem, is using more water than we need to in lawns or gardens or things like that. So that's what I have for you tonight for that one.
Sarah, I'm always impressed by your enthusiasm and your willingness to share that. And I can, I can speak firsthand, as you know, of, I've saw you out in the community and observed you interacting with people and encouraging people to do the right thing and I really want to thank you for that. So I kind of want to give kudos a little bit to Councilmember O'Brien. I know that you put in a rain garden in your yard a few years ago and I think Sarah helped you with that.
Yes, she did. SWCD and Sarah. Just let you know, you should come and take a look. It's really grown.
Oh.
And we're getting a lot of runoff and it's not going into the storm sewers. That's going into the rain garden and filtering like it's supposed to. It's working very well. So if the public is listening, encourage them to go get some rain gardens.
Yeah.
I know my wife and I drove by your place last night, Mike, and I pointed out your rain garden to her and I said, you know, "That's the project that you started on two years ago and it looks wonderful. It's beautiful." And it's a nice addition to the front yard there and so good work there. So Sarah, thank you for your work. Council, any questions for Sarah? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sarah, for being here again. So I just have a question. We have a lot of lawn service companies in town. Some don't do what you want them to do, blowing the grass in. I know I've stopped a couple of times and told them, but do you send out notices to the companies at the beginning of the spring how they should?
That isn't something we've done yet because you'll see with the next thing on your agenda, it's not something that was prohibited by our stormwater ordinance. However, if we make some amendments to our stormwater ordinance, it might give us more reason to send notices like that out. And it's definitely part of our, I would say, one-to-five-year education goals, is to do some training. With Lawn Care Services, they're often the ones, too, in the winter that are doing the snow and ice removal stuff, too, so we can hit them both with the fertilizer and the lawn, grass clippings and things for the summer and then, you know, better snow maintenance type of stuff, too. So definitely, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
One more question for you, Sarah. We discussed, remember the meeting with Wilmer Area Lakes that we sat down and talked about this? We have a number of inlets coming into that northern part of Wilmer Lake. And we talked about possibly putting in rocks at the inlet where they're coming out to help filter. Do you think that would do any good? We had talked about that before.
It's not something, typically, rocks and hardscaping isn't something that filter pollutants. It can be a means of preventing erosion or scour happening if the velocity of the water coming in is high. But there's probably things we can do further up on the landscape, further up in the watershed that would have a better water quality impact.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I was going to agree with Councilmember Fagerly, but I wanted to compliment you on the things that are going on Facebook. I think Public Works are doing it and you are doing it. But I think in light of that, it would be great if we could enforce some with our commercial people. It's hard to expect a neighbor not to do it when you see commercials and especially on First Street and some of the streets that everyone drives down. And so I would be supportive of helping you to figure out a way to do it in an education manner or an expectation. I think that's fair for our community.
Yes, I appreciate that, definitely. I will say the state does have, so our operators went to the smart salting for roads and the MPCA does have a couple other, as far as smart salting trainings, one for property managers and one for like private snow removal contractors. And I have attended those to, you know, see what they cover and things. That is something that we would like to, hopefully in the near future, bring to Wilmer to offer for them. It's, I mean, it's taught by professionals that are in the industry and so I think it's going to be really well accepted by them, maybe even more so than just somebody standing up and saying, "This is what you should do," from people that say, "You can do this and it does work." So we definitely have plans, but I appreciate hearing that support for sure.
Additional comments or questions? Well, I think what I'm hearing tonight, Sarah, is that if you wanted to add something into your budget to cover this education piece, it might be something you may want to consider for the budget next year of how we could educate our lawn mowing services and our snow removal services. And I think you'd probably have support for that. So again, thank you for a job well done.
You're welcome.
Now, do we have to, we have to accept the stormwater MS4 permit conditions as presented?
I will make a motion to receive the annual stormwater presentation for MS4 permitting.
Second. Motion made and seconded. A discussion. Role call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have consider changes to ordinance section 17-32 discharge prohibitions and set a public hearing. Sarah, go ahead.
Yes. So Mayor and members of the council, tonight we have an introduction for changes to our surface water management ordinance and a request to set a public hearing. So chapter 17, Article 3, Section 17-32 discusses discharges to stormwater that are prohibited. An amendment we feel is necessary to include additional specific materials that are prohibited from being discharged and that would be deemed an illicit discharge by this ordinance. This came about due to changes in the most recent issuance of that stormwater general permit from the state that requires cities to develop, implement, and enforce regulatory mechanisms that prohibit non-stormwater discharges to our municipal separate stormwater system. So these proposed changes would be to include a number three and a number four to the prohibition of illicit discharges, which would be to prevent, in general, grass clippings, leaves, tree branches, or other vegetation, and chemicals such as fertilizers, herbicides, and pesticides, petroleum-based products such as gasoline, oil, fuels, solvents, and paints, and excess salt, sand, or other materials for snow and ice removal from being deposited into the city's storm drainage system. It is staff's recommendation to introduce this amendment and set a public hearing for the June 21st City Council meeting for this amendment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for June 21st, 2021, at 7:01, it should be 6:01, right?
6:01.
At 6:01 PM. Discussion. A role call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Does that have to be a role call or is that a simple motion? We're just simply setting the hearing. I mean, the hearing would be a role call, but setting the hearing is only a motion, isn't it?
Mayor, members of the council, that's generally correct. I know that, well, we were doing the hybrid meetings. Every vote was a role-call vote. Probably now that we're all present and no one is attending remotely, doesn't need to continue for motions like that.
Staff, can you make note of that, please? Next, we have consideration of street improvement project budgets. Mr. Okens. First, we have a resolution to adopt project number 2101A, Second Street Reconstruction Project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Included in your packet are three budgets. The first budget, as you mentioned, is for 2101A. The council has previously accepted the bid for Riley Brothers Construction. These budgets were prepared by the Engineering Department. The second resolution, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I failed, I had my note here, but I failed to follow it. So if you could excuse me, I would like to move item number 20 forward to item number 11. So please excuse me. It was my mistake. Councilmember, next, we'll have an update report on interim city administrator plan from Councilmembers Nelson and Ask who were tasked with bringing a recommendation, making a recommendation back to this meeting. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Kelvin. Councilmember Ask and I spent some time reviewing. We also met with John Heron to ask if he would be interested in what we were looking at, kind of a phase one, phase two approach to filling in as an interim administrator. And Councilmember Heron, or, Mr. Heron had agreed to do that, subject to, he asked us to meet with the Labor Committee. And so I did meet with the Labor Committee of the Municipal Utilities Commission, who did make a motion to agree to allow Mr. Heron to consider that on what we looked at as a stopgap and kind of requested a timeframe be put in place with that. After we heard that Mr. Heron was agreeable to that and also we were working with our city attorney, Robert Scott, to come up with the correct way to do that. And if it's all right, I will defer to Mr. Scott right now to share with us a temporary resolution regarding this.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, last week, consistent with Councilmember Nelson's update, I worked with the mayor, Councilmember Nelson, as well as Mr. Heron from the Utilities Commission to try and figure out how to accomplish what Councilmember Nelson just explained was the objective. Before you is a draft resolution pursuant to which the council would approve the employment of Mr. Heron on a temporary basis. That was one of two options available for us to try and make this happen. The other would have been a contract between the city and the Utilities Commission itself pursuant to which the commission would have essentially made its employee available to the city. Keep in mind that the city and the Utilities Commission for this purpose are considered to be separate entities with separate employees. So Mr. Heron being an employee of the Utilities Commission couldn't simply just be assigned duties directly by the city without becoming an employee of the city or otherwise having a contractual arrangement in place between the city and the utilities. Ultimately, we decided for primarily timing reasons, the quicker and more efficient way to accomplish this would be for the city to simply hire Mr. Heron on a temporary basis. The resolution before you accomplishes that. A couple of things to point out with it. Mr. Heron would start in this capacity, beginning tomorrow, assuming he accepts the offer to become a city employee, which, again, we understand he will do so. State and federal law would require that Mr. Heron be paid for his time working for the city. Mr. Heron has requested that he be paid the minimum allowable amount, which is $10.08 per hour for time spent working for the city. And then we've also specified some of the duties and responsibilities that Mr. Heron would be asked to provide. Those are in paragraph five of the resolution. I'm not going to read them, but I want to just characterize them as the functions that are needed for things to get approved and for city operations to continue with the least disruption possible while you do not have a full-time city administrator employed. Mr. Heron has, and the Labor Committee of the Utilities Commission have agreed to basically continue this arrangement through a latest date of July 2nd, so not quite a full month. And in that time, again, the intent, I think, of this resolution is that Mr. Heron would have authority to approve personnel actions, personnel requests, sign documents, sign off on any requests under policy, ordinance, charter that would require city administrator authorization or approval. The expectation is not that Mr. Heron, in the, you know, time he will be assisting the city, would serve as a full-time leader of the organization as you would expect from a full-time administrator. Again, this is really just a arrangement to allow city operations to continue to function until such time as the city is able to fill the administrator position on a full-time basis, on a longer-term basis. So I do think there's still, if I can suggest this to the council, I do think there's urgency for the council to make a, an appointment to that position to fill it on a full-time basis as quickly as the council's able to do that. Whether that's a permanent administrator or a longer-term but full-time interim. So that's the intent of this resolution. I certainly would be happy to answer any questions the council may have. But again, this is a resolution just to approve the temporary hourly employment of Mr. Heron to perform the critical functions that the city organization needs to continue operating in the short term.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Councilmember Ask, do you have anything else that you would like to comment regarding this resolution before, or with Mr. Heron?
It's been a busy, or last week was a busy week. So I don't think I have anything else to add, just to say thank you to Mr. Heron for his willingness to serve our city. I think this is the stability that we need in this immediate moment. As Mr. Scott said, it's not a long-term solution, but it's one that we need in the immediate moment.
All right. With that, I would be willing to enter a motion to adopt the resolution as presented to us to recommend that Mr. Heron be a temporary employee effective June 8th, following the guideline that was in the resolution. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve hiring Mr. John Heron in a temporary position for employment with the city of Wilmer, serving as our interim, short-term city administrator. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have ultimate respect for John and I'm sure he'll do a good job. He already has a position with the city and if he can take this part-time job, then he doesn't have enough work at the MUC. And I remember talking with the MUC years ago about having a merged City Hall, MUC building and they didn't want us there. So this is just a Band-Aid. I presented a proposal three months ago and it got shot down. So I'm not in favor of this, I'm sorry.
Additional comments or questions? Role call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
No.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Six ayes, one knee.
That motion carries, that resolution carries. I want to thank Councilmember Ask and Councilmember Nelson for doing some real heavy lifting last week. When we received the email from Mr. Gramm that he was leaving us on Wednesday afternoon, both of our, all three of our phones were ringing pretty much the rest of the day in trying to find out what we were going to do. And I want to, I want to thank John for his willingness to step up to the plate and help us out here. You know, it's not, it's not an issue of, do you have enough work or not? You have way too much work already. It's just that you're willing to help us out. And, you know, when you and I talked, man, I can't remember when that was, probably two weeks ago, the first time we talked about it. You had mentioned that, you know, "Mr. Mayor, I want to help the city any way I can, but I don't want this to impact the job that I currently have." And you do a bang-up job, your reports are thorough, your reports are very detailed, you do a phenomenal job, and you have a very full plate and you're just adding to your plate. And so, good work. I commend you regularly, publicly, and also privately. I do it both ways. I do it both ways, and you are a true gentleman to step up to the plate and put yourself on the line, so to speak. So thank you very much for helping us out. I do appreciate that. So we look forward to working with you in the near future.
I would just like to add, too, if you wouldn't mind.
Councilmember O'Brien.
I'm the liaison for the council for the Minnesota Public Utilities, and I've had a great time working with Mr. Heron. And you talked about being a gentleman. We were able to sit down after the meetings and talk about different things, and it's just been a great relationship. And I thank you.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Nelson.
I, too, would just like to thank Mr. Heron. In meeting with him, I truly believe that he is willing to do this for what's best for the city for this time. I also would like to thank the Municipal Utilities Commission. They recognize the importance of their work, and in, we're cautious and concerned about the amount of time with that. That's also the reason that this date is in here, to keep us moving forward. So I just want to say thank you for that. And then we do have a Phase Two that we'd just like to share, too, when we're through with that, so.
Additional comments in regards to the resolution that was just passed? Seeing hearing then, Councilmember Nelson, Phase Two.
Okay. So while we were working with Mr. Heron to sort through this, we also did our homework with both the League of Minnesota Cities and Flaherty and Hood, and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities have also given us names. We have started to review those, subject to what the council was going to do tonight, to see what the next direction would be with the timeframe that's laid out before us. And so we have not made any, we've not reached out and made any contacts to anyone specifically, but both organizations, along with Flaherty and Hood, have agreed to assist us with that, if that's the direction we want to go, to be looking for someone that would fit Phase Two or a longer-term interim administrator, subject to what we do with hiring. And so looking for some direction with that, also as we go forward with what you would like for us to do next, because the time will go by quickly. And I think we are both, Councilmember Osk and I are ready to make some contacts or reach out to ask some other people for information, too. And I would ask Councilmember Osk if he has any, anything else he'd like to comment with that.
I'd just like to say that we have prioritized some of that list and kind of narrowed it down, done some research on availability of folks that are on that list, and also just kind of their history in cities of similar size, and where they live in the state as well, to kind of determine who might be higher priorities.
Well, from the mayor's office, I would like you to continue pursuing that list and, you know, working with the city attorney on that process, and so that, if needed, come back on, meeting on the 21st with a recommendation for someone either to fill in on a shorter-term or a longer-term basis. I mean, I think this contract gives us the ability to move through July 2nd, and so that gives us some flexibility there. I've been in contact with Patty, and she's working on some possibilities of us to maybe look at some other candidates as well, so that's out there as well. So she may have a recommendation to us yet this week on someone that we could consider for that as well, so. But at this point, we don't have anything to move forward that way. But I would like you to continue moving forward, unless the council objects. And I believe you, it was under your purview to bring us the options, and I think you brought us two options. So unless I hear otherwise, we'll continue to move the process in the direction it's going.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have, you have clear enough direction?
Yep, we're good to go.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Okens, I apologize. Finance Director, please, consideration of street improvement project budgets. And then if needed, Rob, we're going to go to you after Steve is done, if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Included in your packet was a committee action form created by the Engineering Department, putting forth three different budgets. We do need three separate resolutions. The first one is for project 2101A, which is Second Street Southeast. The council has previously awarded the contract to Riley Brothers Construction, Inc., in the amount of a little over $2 million. The total budget as presented to you for that project is $2,309,571. The action tonight on the assessment hearing coincides with these numbers. The action to approve these three budgets tonight will allow staff to proceed and start the process for bonding, and that will be coming to your next council meeting. I don't know if you want to take them individually. So the first one, again, is 2101A, in the amount of $2,309,571.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the budget for project 2101A, in the amount of $2,309,571. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The second one, Mr. Mayor, is for project 2101B, which is Eagle Ridge Drive, which, again, you approved the assessments at tonight's hearing. That budget is in the amount of $1,200,000. The council also has approved prior a contract with Dunick, Inc., in the amount of $1,087,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve a budget for project number 2101B, Eagle Ridge Drive East Pavement Rehabilitation, the amount of 1.2 million. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, the third and final budget is for project 2103-A, which is First Street South. Again, you, at your assessment hearing tonight, approved the assessments. The total of that budget is in the amount of $716,783.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve budget for project number 2103A, First Street Overlay, in the amount of $716,783. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you, Finance Director Okens. Next, we'll go to item number 14 on our agenda, Consider Reallocation of Capital Improvement Plan Funding for Blue Line Arena Sound System. Rob.
Thank you, Mayor, member of the council. Tonight, we're going to talk about reallocation of capital funds from the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center to the Blue Line Sound System. So the motion tonight will be to adopt a resolution reallocating $2,540 from the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center Tuck Pointing Project to the Blue Line Sound System Project. Basically, in a nutshell, in 2020, the capital projects were shut down due to COVID, and that's when the project was supposed to be slated for the Blue Line Sound System. When they got the rebid back from Midstates Audio, their prices went up and it went over budget. So waited to see what the tuck pointing project would have came in, under budget from the $30,000 that was allocated for that, and to use those funds to help pay for the sound system that's on the Blue Line. And it's the same sound system, similar sound system, same company, same type of technology that we have in the Civic Center arena right now.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to reallocate $2,540 from the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center Tuck Point Project to the Blue Line Arena Sound System Project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve reallocating capital improvement funding for the Blue Line Arena Sound System. Discussion from council. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just one question. Did we have donations for that also, or was that for the other sound system?
That donation was for the Civic Center one.
Okay.
So for the extra base that the Warhawks wanted to have in that system.
Okay, thank you.
And that was done last year, correct, or two years ago?
Two years ago, yep.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Osk.
What happens with the remaining $7,000 in that fund?
It can be used for other capital expenditures, or it just goes back. We're lucky that the tuck pointing company, they honored their 2020 bid, so the other bid was at $26,000. So we can use it for other projects that we need to, or it just goes back into the reserves. Thank you.
The monies would be either left unallocated for this year unless council moved them someplace, or it becomes part of the base that the mayor starts building his budget with. And so staff then would work with the mayor, and they would know those numbers, those unaudited numbers, and then those get brought forward, and then that's the base that we use to start building the budget for 2022. So we don't have to spend the money. It's not, you have to spend it or lose it. It's that, that then becomes our base that we build off of. Councilmember Osmus.
Mr. Bobgard, did, was there another structural issue with the aquatic facility, or did this tuck pointing take care of that?
Yep, it took the bottom row and some of the weeping out, so we actually were able to match it up fairly well with the bricks.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of, consideration of facility use agreement with Independent School District number 347. Rob.
Mayor, member of the council, this is a motion to approve the agreement with One Republic School to utilize the district facilities and other facilities per the agreement. Basically, this is our same agreement that we've had the last three times. This is our third time doing it. It gives us a chance to use their facilities, and the school gets to use our facilities. We've also talked with the community ed director, Scott Wallner, on any of the issues that we've had in the past. Everything's been resolved. We haven't had any issues. If there are, we address them at that time. So it's formality that we're trying to use their facilities, and they use ours.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded to continue the facility use agreement with Independent School District number 347. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Next is Consider a Lease with Veterans Central Council for Flags of Honor Veterans Memorial. This is a really exciting project, and it's a lot of fun to see where that's at, so I'm really looking forward to this report, Rob, so bang it up.
All right, well, it's just really to try to get the agreement into place so the project can get going. So the motion tonight will be to recommend to the City Council of Wilmer to adopt a resolution approving the Flags of Honor Memorial Lease Agreement. Basically, we've, we probably all know what the project is going to entail. It's going to entail pretty much an overhaul of the Flags of Honor Memorial Park. City staff has been out there working with Scott, or Steve Gardner and them. It's just going to be a really nice project to get completed, especially when you drive into town. Working with City Attorney Scott on the agreement, everything's good. John Christensen of the Veterans County Council is, we're just ready to go.
Perfect, perfect. You know, I remember when they came to us originally and had this idea that they wanted to bring this, you know, updated, you know, basically what they wanted, something that was more user-friendly, I think is kind of what they wanted. And I thought, man, that's a, that's a heavy lift. And I know they've really worked hard. John Christensen has worked hard, Steve Gardner has worked hard on getting this project. And I know Mike O'Brien, you've been involved in some of the work here in the last few months. I know you and I have talked about it quite a bit, so. And other council members, if you've got anything that you'd like to make comments about this, but otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve this lease agreement. Councilmember Osmus.
I would just like to mention that there are plaques still available for purchase, and you can get ahold of John Christensen, or Steve Gardner, or contact somebody at the VFW, or the American Legion, or contact Trish Appeldor, our Veterans Service Officer at the Health and Human Services Building. And I believe there is also some benches that are also available to be in memory of somebody or to purchase. They don't want corporate names on those, that they are for individual names or families. And I will make a motion to recommend to the City Council to adopt a resolution approving the Flags of Honor Memorial Lease Agreement.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adopt a resolution to approve the lease agreement with Veterans Center Council for Flags of Honor Veterans Memorial. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I was looking to see landscaping and some of those things, what they're going to take care of and what we're going to take care of. And so very much in favor of this, and I think it's an opportunity. I spent a lot of time walking out there this winter and spring, and I know that Public Works does a great job, but there's some areas out there, I wasn't quite sure, behind, down by the water, those types of things, if we have a plan for enhancing that while they're enhancing this. And so that's more of a question with what can the city do to help move this project forward with any kind of other enhancements.
We've had conversations with the Public Works staff. Gary Manzer, Kurt Hein, and I have been out there to tour the facility, to talk with Steve Gardner about some of the things that can happen out there, pre and post of the project, to make sure that it is done correctly.
Okay.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we have Swanson Field Project. Rob, you're on a roll, don't stop now.
Okay, let's keep it going, then.
We don't have any turned down yet, let's make sure we keep it going.
One thing I'd like to add about with the Flags of Honor, I believe that they're doing a groundbreaking ceremony next Monday at 10:00.
10:00 AM, yes.
Yep. This one now is going to be the Invest in Wilmer Swanson Field Project. We're going to have two resolutions with this. Tonight, we do have the chairs of the Swanson Field Committee. We've got Rick Morse and Mary Swatsky along with us. The motions tonight will be to adopt a resolution awarding the contracts to the contractors and material suppliers recommended by Marcus Construction, the construction manager, for each bid package, and author, and authorization of the mayor and the city council to sign on the behalf of the city of Wilmer all contracts, letter, award letters, and letters assigning the right to enter into such contracts to the construction manager. So if we look at it, the bids were opening on April 28th of this year. Part of the project is going to be a new grandstand, installing turf in the infield, new dugouts, fencing improvements, a concession stand, and improvements on drainage in the outfield. And then we also looked at what we can do with blue field and that price to improve that one, to include a grass in field, dugouts, fencing, and improve the drainage. The base project of what orange would be, would be $1,587,889. And then with blue being the alternate, would be $1,083,987.48. So what that leaves us for is if we look at our budget, it gets to be a little tight, but we're able to do that with the city costs in there. So the overall budget will be $1,998,776.48. So it gets to be tight to the $2 million project, but we're able to do all the project at one time. That was the big thing that we wanted to do, is make sure that we can get orange and Elsie field done, and then be able to use that equipment that's there to get blue done at the same time. So this is going to be a great project to get finished, and this is probably the last one going through with the Invest in Wilmer that we'll have to bring to the council for a while. So if Rick and Mary have something to say, we can bring them up. I know Joe Degro is online for Marcus Construction, if we have questions from Joe on this standpoint, too.
Okay, council, what are your wishes here?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the contracts for Swanson Field and assigning all contract award letters and rights to the contract manager, who is Marcus Construction. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a call before I came here tonight from a contractor that got the sprinkler system. He said the piping and the wiring that's in that shed now is
He said the piping and the wiring that's in that shed now is fine. It doesn't have to be dug up and needs an extension into the orange field. But he said should be able to save $10,000 to $12,000, which would help immensely.
Yep, we've had that conversation amongst Marcus at our pre-construction meeting as well. So they are fully aware of what is inside that building, as far as it being, what type of line that it needs to be in there. So they're, they're on top of it. Yes, sir.
And then the city will be putting a playground out there.
Yep, that's part of the five-year park plan, is to put a playground out there.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Rule call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Rick and Mary, wow, you guys have done a lot of heavy lifting over the last three years. A lot of phone calls, a lot of meetings that you guys attended, a lot of ways of slashing and cutting to get in what you wanted. I know you're not getting what you want. I mean, this is one of those things of we're getting something which is better than nothing. And, you know, as long as I'm the mayor, and I've only got one more budget to prepare, and then I'm done, but I won't forget the commitment I made to you, Mary. And I made that commitment to you, I think it was four years ago, if I remember right. And I'll remember that. So thank you for your work. Thank you for the dedication to this community. Rick, the work that you've done over all the years, last year bringing the new dugouts for, over at Baker, you know, you worked tirelessly for the baseball community here in Wilmer. I don't know where you get your energy from and how you always have that passion, but you roll your sleeves up and get it done. So thank you so much for your dedication to, to improving baseball within the city of Wilmer. So we owe you a lot, a debt of gratitude, so. Anything else council wishes to say? Councilmember Nelson.
I think we have a second resolution.
Yep, one more resolution. Okay, and.
I wanted to give some thanks, though. I mean, you know, we don't, we don't have to be too militaristic here, so kind of lighten us up a little bit. And to be honest with you, I'm trying to slow us down.
The second motion is to adopt a resolution accepting the attached guaranteed maximum price proposal in the amount of $1,771,876.48 for the base bid plus the amounts of the alternate awarded as shown below, and authorizing the city administrator and the mayor to sign on the behalf of the city of Wilmer.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the guaranteed maximum price proposal for the base bid plus all alternates awarded, and authorizing signatures on behalf of the city. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. At this time, I will go to our interim human resources director, Nancy Miller, for a presentation on consideration of a process for hiring our human resources director.
Testing. So thank you, Mayor, council members. And I guess I'm just asking for clarification. We may not need to do this if I was under the understanding that the new interim director could make decisions on the personnel issues. Is that correct?
Yes, the new city administrator can do that, but I believe you wanted to make a recommendation on a hiring. So, Mr. Scott, do you want to provide some direction here? I thought that we were still going to go through with the, with this motion, this item, to give permission.
Mayor, members of the council, included in the authorization of responsibilities to be performed by Mr. Heron in the resolution earlier this meeting was the ability to work with the city to fill department director positions that were already in progress and for which interviews had already been conducted at the be, at the time of his hiring by the city, which is basically just a little bit ago. I also believe that the former administrator, Mr. Grammets, had overseen and participated in a hiring process that proceeded to the point of interviewing candidates for the human resources director position, and had forwarded a recommendation to the council for that, or at least had developed and agreed with the consensus choice for that position, which is now, I believe, under consideration by the council. So I think it's certainly appropriate for the council to consider that recommendation tonight. The name of the candidate, since there was no interview by the appointing authority, would become public subsequent to his or her employment by the city, accepting the offer of employment. But having said all that, obviously, this is a council choice. The process to appoint and hire department directors is joint authority shared by the city administrator and the city council. So if the city council is not comfortable proceeding tonight, certainly it could just discuss the process and how it would wish to move forward with this position.
Okay, so my understanding, and I talked with Mr. Heron this afternoon in regards to this issue, and what I believe we would like to do is to move in a timely fashion. And so the recommendation that I think we would like to see tonight is that the city administrator work with our interim HR director to offer the job, and then if the person approved and accepted the position, then that position would be a hired position. Again, the name is not public because we have not interviewed that person, and the admin, we didn't have an administrator at the time, so we couldn't make that offer until after the meeting tonight. So Mr. Heron is familiar with the process that's been followed, and he's comfortable. And John, I'm not sure if you want to speak to it or not, but I think that you were comfortable with the candidate that had been selected of moving that person forward. But we can't mention the person's name yet because the job offer hasn't went, because no one could do that, because we didn't have authority. The mayor didn't have authority, the council didn't have the authority until they met. And so tonight, you know, if Mr. Heron's in agreement of that, and the council's in agreement of moving that name forward, they could make that offer, and then that person could be hired for that position. So, Mr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I am familiar with the process. Janelle Johnson, our HR and compliance director in our office, assisted with the interview process, so I'm very aware of the individuals that were interviewed, and I'm aware of the individual that has rose to the finalist position here. And yes, I'd be comfortable making that recommendation for that individual.
Okay, so the council, you have a choice of either accepting that, moving forward with the hire without the name, or waiting until two weeks. But again, this is a, this is a timely hire, a position that we need filled. And so I talked with Councilmember Plowman, who was on the interview committee, and Councilmember Plowman, I thought was going to try to join us tonight and express his support of the position as well. But it's up to you guys, whatever you want to do. We can either accept that we have somebody that's going to be coming forward in two weeks, and then they can go back and offer the job, and then two weeks later, come back to us for final approval. Or if you want to approve the individual with the recommendation that you've heard from both Nancy and John, you could do that. It's your choice, whatever you choose to do. Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Osmus.
I was just wondering what happened to our process where we're hiring a city administrator, and we're saying you can hire your own team. It's not happening now.
Well, this was put in process, I talked to Nancy about this earlier. This process was put in place over a month ago of this process. And so it just happened to be that Brian ended up leaving, as we all know, on Wednesday, which kind of put us a little bit behind the eight ball. Otherwise, we would have came today with a recommendation and a name. So, yeah, we did talk about that, but again, hiring department directors is under the purview of the administrator with final approval of the appointing authority, as Mr. Scott has stated, which is the council. Councilmember Osmus.
I think your second recommendation was the most expedient, correct?
Correct.
I would be in favor of that. I'm comfortable with the people who are on the panel, that they are in consensus, that the person who rose to the top is, is the best for the position, and whatever it takes to move this forward in the most rapid way is what I would suggest we do.
I'll second that.
So there'd need to be a motion?
Do we want the motion that is the recommended action from the car report? Or it's a separate motion to go with?
Would be a recommendation to, to approve the hiring of the HR director following the recommendation of the city administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Councilmember Nelson.
Just seeking clarification, because we have another one that, interviews that we're in the middle of also. So will this come back to us then for the regular recommend, I mean, regular motion at the next meeting, or we're basically doing this now?
We would be approving this position now. The other positions, you know, the council hasn't made direction on that yet. This one was the farthest down the line. This one, this one, I mean, they had set the interviews, they, they conducted the interviews. All of that had happened prior to Brian leaving. The, the goal was to get to Mr. Grammets prior to him leaving on Wednesday. They were about 20 minutes late with talking to Mr. Grammets, or tonight, it would have been a motion to approve the name. We don't have any other of our processes that are at that level. And so that's the one we're at right now. And so we, let's act on this one, and then we can talk a little bit more about some other things that are, that are in the pipeline. And I think our item number 19 also talks a little bit about that, so.
I just was seeking clarification that this will be different than what we've done with other department heads.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Rule call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Nay.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly. Five ayes, two nays.
That motion passes. Okay, we're going to continue on the hiring thing for a bit, so. The next thing that we have is what Councilmember Nelson just brought up. We have interviews set for Thursday for our city planner position. And again, that is an appointment that comes through the city administrator, and I believe the city administrator will be briefed on that tomorrow, if he hasn't already been briefed on it. And so that would be a city planner position, which would not be a department director, which the city administrator has the authority to hire that position. The other thing is, is the hiring of the, the hiring of our public works director, which, Councilmember Nelson, you sat in on interviews on that as well, but there were going to be more interviews set in the future. So if we want to wait till after 19, we can talk about that department director position, or if you wish to talk about it at this time, we can talk about it. It would be at your discretion, Councilmember Nelson.
I think the direction that I heard, and maybe Nancy would like to, Ms. Miller would like to address that, was that we were waiting to hear what was being brought up here before we moved ahead with that.
Right, that's what I thought as well, right. But the other positions that we're interviewing for currently are under the purview of the administrator. And so those positions are approved by the administrator. Ms. Miller?
I'm just waiting for a question. Did you? Okay, so that is correct. We, we did close the public works director position. We had interviewed one person with Brian and Audrey and myself prior to Brian leaving. And we do have another application that is well-qualified as well. So we're excited to have two good applicants, well-qualified for this public works director. And depending on how this meeting proceeds, whether we, you know, bring them both back in, and pretty much start that interview process over again with a new team.
And I believe that's a decision that the city administrator needs to make. You know, you're not going to have consistency on the interview team, and so that's a decision that would, that I would recommend being given to the administrator. And Councilmember Nelson and I talked about that, I believe it was today or Saturday, one of those two days that we talked about that on process. So I think we'll leave that in the hands of the administrator for a recommendation.
Sounds good.
Okay, with that, we'll go to item number 12. And Sarah, if you can handle item number 12 for us, please.
I did talk to the wastewater superintendent earlier today on this project. So this would be to consider adopting a resolution awarding project number 2110A, the downtown sanitary sewer lining to hydro clean in the amount of $195,922. This project came about from the smoke testing that we did of the sanitary sewer last fall in the downtown area that I mentioned in the stormwater presentation earlier. So several blocks of that sanitary system were identified as severely deteriorated that need to be repaired at the moment. And so by doing this cured-in-place, UV cured-in-place pipelining, it will get the repairs we need done for that system. There isn't a road project being planned right now for sanitary to be part of. This would prevent any major road reconstruction, trenching, things like that being needed to do it this way. This new UV cured-in-place is similar to what used to be the steam cured-in-place type of system. UV is kind of the new technology that is being used now. The bids were open May 11th for the project, and hydro clean came in with a low bid amount, again, of $195,922. So it would be staff's recommendation to consider awarding that project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the downtown sanitary sewer lining to hydro clean with the amount of 100,000, 190, can you give me the number again, please?
So the project would be $195,922 with 10% contingency.
Okay, in the amount of $195,922. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's no cost to any property owners, is there?
Correct, this would be coming out of wastewater's operating budget, as I understand it. This won't be assessed to property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Since it's coming out of yours, it's not a budgeted item that we had talked about before. This was something that came through those tests, but it's something you, you are prepared to handle in your fund.
Yes, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, additional comments or questions? Rule call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight, seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Public Works Director, interim Public Works Director, Gary Manzer, would you like to present item number 13?
I'm a little unprepared for it, but I know the project a little bit. And it's, it's the First Street Overlay project at 19th Avenue to Wilmer Avenue. And I don't have the numbers, they were on the screen earlier, but the low bid was Dunick Incorporated. And so that'd be to approve that project to Dunick Incorporated.
Okay, so there's a recommendation from staff to approve awarding the project number 2103, First Street Overlay to Dunick Incorporated, in the amounts that were covered in the budget earlier.
So move. Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion.
That amount is, do we need to say?
It's. Okay. Additional comments or questions? Rule call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. We'll go to item number 19, and item number 19 is, is not worded exactly the way that I would have worded it, but that is the way it is in your document. I had a couple council members come to me and request that the council consider talking and discussing about seeing that we lost both our public works director and our assistant public works director at the same time. Is this a good time for the council to look at, is there a different way we can do business? And by. And by a different way to do business, it doesn't mean that the way we're doing it is wrong or there's anything broken with the way we're doing it. But what do some other cities do and what does it look like in some other cities? And I had asked Jared to kind of talk a little bit about some of the things that Bolton and Mink do. And what I wanted to have tonight was a discussion, a robust discussion in regards to engineering services and how they're provided in communities. And I'm not saying that what we do currently is broke. I'm not saying that we need a radical overhaul. But I am familiar, and I have worked in two other cities, that used contract engineering services. And those services, you have a city engineer that comes onto staff and works the same as a hired city engineer would work. But then again, you still, as we did last week or two weeks ago, you still have to have your public works director, which we assigned those tasks in the interim to Mr. Manzer. So I was asked to bring this to the council for discussion. I want to make it very clear to any employees that are here tonight, any employees who are watching, it is not the intent to terminate any employees that are currently working for the city. We still need those services. We are not downsizing our department. We're just taking our engineering services and considering, talking about, should that be done with a private contractor? Bolton and Mink provide this service to numerous other cities. Councilmember Fagerly will remember when we used to work with SEH. They provide this service across the metro. I know we have the former mayor of Columbia Heights here, and I know that she's aware of a lot of agreements of other cities who work with contract engineers. And they do a good service. I'm going to make some opening comments and then I'm going to open up for the council to see what comments you would have. One of the things with having a contract engineer, currently Bolton and Mink does a lot of work for us already under professional services agreements. And I'm going to catch the finance director a little bit off guard here, but you know, you know, if you can prepare just a ballpark, you know, within, you know, within 200, 300,000, what we spent with Bolton and Mink last year. And I'll get to you in a little bit, but just I'll give you some time to get prepared for that a little bit. So we already are using contracting engineers. The advantage is, is that if you have a project that you want evaluated, as an example, when we looked at the project on Carter Road 55 of adding the, the traffic semaphore, that's a project that you could simply call up Bolton and Mink and say, give us design costs for traffic semaphore for that intersection and let us know what it is and then bring it to our next council meeting. Again, that would be directed by the city administrator, but bring it to our next council meeting and then we as a council can discuss if we want to do it. The American Recovery Funds, you know, the monies we have available with that, some of that can be used for infrastructure and we could simply say, bring us a recommendation on X number of miles of city street, X number of intersections, whatever would qualify. I'm not sure if that qualifies or not. Councilmember Nelson and I talked about this afternoon. We're not sure if, I'm not sure now if that would qualify or not. But it gives the administrator a tool in the toolbox where he can make a phone call, get an answer at an agreed upon dollar amount, and then we would know what those engineering services would cost. And then our current agreement with Bolton and Mink, and it's a three year, a three month agreement, has them charging us back at $95 an hour, which is a very, very favorable rate. So with that, I'm going to look to the administrator, or the finance director and see if he's got a number for me yet. But, but then I'm going to open it up to the council and just, so I'd like to have, us to have a discussion as to, is there an advantage to look at doing things differently now that both of the positions are open? If one position was open, probably wouldn't make sense, but if we have both positions open, I think it's a good time to discuss it. And when I was, when I had council members contact me about this recently, I said, let's put it on the agenda to discuss it. Again, let me emphasize, no current city employees are being terminated to make this happen. That is not the recommendation. So Mr. Okins, do you have a approximate number?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll defer your question to Mr. Vogi since he's since arrived, since you've asked it. But I know I do have some numbers for the last seven years and it's close to $4 million. But again, I would qualify that in the level of activity that the city has been doing and the number of different projects. So maybe Mr. Vogi can allude to the question of how much it has been for the last year, if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vogi, I know you've had a full night tonight. I know you're presenting in multiple cities tonight and thank you for your expertise and wisdom. And I've done a brief introduction and kind of covered the things that you and I talked about on the phone earlier today with the city attorney. So the question I'd ask Mr. Okins is approximately, how much has the city contracted with Bolton and Mink in the last year for engineering services? And I said, if you can be within about 200 to 300,000, I said, that would be good. So, and we can, we can take some comments from council because I see you, you're trying to add things quickly in your head and I know I'm catching your flat foot and I apologize, so.
I have a question while he's thinking.
Yes. Councilmember Osmas.
Okay. I just want a clarification. It was my understanding that before Mr. Christensen was hired, I had the information that we went two years without a city engineer, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so we solely worked with Bolton and Mink then. They were, they, that's, I mean, not solely, but that's kind of what we're looking at again, is that we would do it all privately versus what we did when Mr. Christensen came.
Correct. That's, that's what is up for discussion is should we be doing that privately? I don't want to go back and say that we solely worked with Bolton and Mink at the time because we worked with Donahue and Associates and I think the bowling engineering, I mean, there were like three or four different firms that we worked with through that period of time.
So I have to believe the bottom line is going to be what was the cost saving when we have our engineer on staff versus what we're, what we would have to pay to have that done by a private company.
Well, I think that's part of the discussion.
Right.
But I mean, you know, so if you take, you know, our engineer, when we were going to contract with him for up to three months, it was $63 an hour. And then if you take and add in your benefits, you've got your PERA, you've got your FICA, you've got everything else. I mean, you're probably looking minimally 30, 35% more than that. And you start adding that up, I mean, now you're up over that $95 an hour that Bolton and Mink is charging us $95 an hour. And so again, I mean, and I'm, I'm doing the spitball, right? I'm just throwing numbers. And so we would have to have that, before we made a decision on that, we have a three month window here. Before we made that decision, we would want our finance department and our HR department to do an in-depth analysis and come back with actuaries and projections and all those types of things. So, yeah. So, yeah. Did that help? Did that give you enough time?
A little bit. I guess I'll just start by thanking the city for the opportunity because as I was starting to write projects down here, my list got a little lengthy between the sales tax and, and the other projects that have gone out for proposals. So I don't even know that I can get you within a $200,000 range, but I'm anticipating the total amount of contracts currently under contract, that's one thing, but the fees paid in 2020, between 2020 and now June to June, I'm going to estimate probably somewhere around 300 is what I'm anticipating.
Okay. Other council members wish to make comments about whether we should talk about it or not? Councilmember Nelson followed by Davis followed by Ask.
In, in thinking about this, I think for me, there's, and I was around when we didn't have a city engineer and I think we hired you as the interim with that. But with that position that we're looking at, there's two sides to that. There's the management side of being a department director to the different departments that we have assigned to our public works director and in addition to the engineering side of it. But I also believe that the city is required to have a licensed engineer be able to sign for a variety of things, et cetera. And if I understand correctly, the ability to reimburse is different, and I believe that's what the mayor is alluding to also, that we'd have to look at, if we contract, we add it on to the project. If we use an in-house engineer, we're able to add some of the costs of the in-house engineer into the project. Am I correct? I don't know all of that, but I think it, it bears more of a question than, you know, do we need a combination of, I mean, we have a director position reviewing what we're managing, but also that you have to have someone in engineering to work on the things that need to be planned for the city in the future in addition to designing projects kind of thing. So I'm struggling a little bit with, this is a lot of information. How does it affect us financially? How does it affect our projects financially? And so as far as, I don't even know the right questions to ask right now with where we're at. I guess I'll quit with that for right now.
Yeah. I think you, I think you, I think you ask a lot of questions and that's, I think, why we want to have this discussion because if we can have a robust discussion about it, I think then we do better work. And, you know, the reason we're sitting here at the table as a collective group is so that we hear each other's opinions, their thoughts. You know, other cities do it. I mean, you know, Wilmer's not the only city that does it or would consider it. When I was in Burnsville, as an example, Burnsville had an in-house city engineer. They went to a contract engineer and they were with a contract engineer for a while. Then they went back to in-house and then they went back to contract. And so you have cities that kind of come in and out of the flow, and I think a lot of it has to do with the amount of people that are available in the workforce. And, you know, one of the things that, that, that a corporation or a company brings is the ability to, you know, we have one engineer with an assistant looking at projects and you have two ideas. With the contract engineer, you have 600 engineers looking at it. And when you have a problem that comes up and you go, hey, you know, what do you think? They can throw it out on their listserv and they can give you 30 ideas on how to handle it. We're in-house, we're going to get two ideas. And is that good? Maybe. Is that bad? Maybe. But again, I wanted the discussion to happen. I think you bring up a lot of good points, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Davis?
So I'm wondering what happens with the engineering department if we contract with them? How do they work together? And kind of what Audrey was saying, you know, who is the department director that's over them or do they follow Bolton and Mink's lead? Or how does that work? And will their, will their jobs, the three people in that department, will their jobs be pretty much the same as they are now?
And again, these are questions we would have to get answers to, Councilmember Davis. We don't have those answers right now, but you have the discussion so you know the questions to ask, so you know what staff can bring back to us with their recommendation. You know, a little earlier, Councilmember Fagerly had said that, you know, we were going to try to hold off on hiring department directors until our new administrator was on board. You know, that was the talk that, you know, some of the council members felt that way, but the administrator we had at the time felt it was important to keep pushing forward with those hires. And, you know, we all received the email last week and all the hires that were made. And that was under the purview of the administrator. He had the authority to do that 100%, had that authority to make those hires and move that process forward. This is a chance to step back and say, okay, do we want to slow it down a little bit? We don't know who our new administrator is going to be. Does our new administrator have a recommendation versus if we just jump into, if you're going to hire the one position, things are going to be the same. We have an opportunity to look at it and see what it looks like. My recommendation would be that, and in talking with Mr. Vogi, you know, they work with cities, they have their own engineering staff, you know, and they don't, you know, and Jared was very clear with me, if you're, if you're talking about laying people off, you know, I'm not, I'm not interested to come to the party. But if you're willing to continue with your staff that you have and, you know, because we're going to still need those services, if you're willing to do that, I'm willing to have a discussion. But I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what you said. So.
That's correct. And to your point, ultimately, we'd be happy to meet with whomever and figure out what the best scenario is for the city of Wilmer. Definitely, we've worked with city staff over a number of years and that, until directed otherwise, that's what we intend to plan or continue to do. So, yeah, there's, there's different scenarios. Every city's different. Some cities have larger engineering, engineering departments than the city of Wilmer and we work with those communities too. So ultimately, it's, it's up to council and we can certainly help you learn how some of those scenarios work in other communities throughout the state.
Okay. Councilmember Ask?
So at our, our May 17 meeting, when we, when we entered into this interim agreement with Bolton and Mink, we spent a lot of time talking about that the position, as Councilwoman Nelson referred to earlier, had both engineering responsibilities and the supervision management responsibilities. I've reflected on that. I don't think that just because you're an engineer makes you a great department head. I mean, you can find that in a certain individual. I think we kind of came to a consensus that, that we probably have the, the management for public works already in place. I think we felt pretty confident with Mr. Manzer and the model as he is right now on the interim basis. And so my, my gut is that we might be well served by a long-term contract with Bolton and Mink. I think that increases the city's capacity for more projects than our current staffing model might allow. If the dollars were to allow for it, I don't know that, that we currently could, could take on more, more projects because we don't have the right folks in place on staff according to the current staff model. I also think it has the benefits of greater efficiency since we're already working with Bolton and Mink so often. And certainly, we're not going to find anyone that has more expertise in the area if we're going to go out and hire for, for that person to be on our staff. I do have questions. I'm curious about the bottom line financially. It, it sounds like it would be comparable. You know, that's something to certainly explore a little bit more, but I would not be in favor of filling the position currently. I think we need to have more conversation about what's best for the city of Wilmer. Certainly, it's not best to lay off any of our current staff members, but in my opinion, waiting and having further conversation would be what is best at this moment.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Osmas?
I feel like I need more information of what the present engineering department does, those, the three employees that are left. When we didn't, when we contracted for those two years before Mr. Christensen was hired, who was, who supervised the engineering department?
The engineering department was supervised by Bruce Peterson.
Community development.
Community development director. And I'm, I'm not going to make any negative comments about anybody, but there's a lot of value in hiring the right people with the right people skills to manage large departments. And I think if you look at the meeting on 17th, you know, we talked very strongly about we have the right person to serve as an interim public works director. You know, so you may need to then say, okay, we're going to redo that job description and now that then becomes a full-time public works director and we take those engineering services away from that. Those engineering services then end up being contracted out to another firm. And we have Bolton and Mink here just because they were on the agenda and they were presenting tonight. But I mean, you know, like, like Councilmember Fagerly said, you know, we've got other, we've got other firms in town. I mean, you know, so, you know, what I would propose is that if we're going to do this, we, we would open it up, we do a competitive bidding process. And then, you know, we can award professional services agreements directly to a company. But I think it would be best to see presentations. If this is the way the council wants to go, you want to see presentations from other people, you know, what can you bring to the table? What, what? What's in your arsenal? Those types of things. And the questions that a lot of the council members have already asked tonight are simply the good questions that we should be talking about. As council, we should be talking about these things. So, what does that department look like? We don't know. Who supervises that department? We don't know. But if you have a good people manager, and you have a good motivator of people, and you have a person that when they say, we would like to have this project done, they don't give them, and I'll use a phrase we heard recently, they don't, they're not told 99 ways to no, they're told one way to yes. And so, and that's what we have in Gary Manzer. I mean, you know, I remember was on the fire department, you know, you called out and talked to Ron Gilbertson, and you said, you know, Ron, you know, this is Marv, I'm with the fire department, and I need a load of sand, and he says, okay, the guys are dumping the sand right now, where do you need it? You know, that's what we need. And that's what a good people motivator does. And, you know, that's what we have in Gary. So, does that answer that part of that question? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Maybe this is an opportunity, though, to work with our staff to review, how do they work together? What does public works do versus what does engineering do versus what do the CSOs do? And how do we work with park and rec? And because public works is intertwined with all of those, and maybe even more so coming back to planning, you know, trails and bike routes and streets that get done and all of those things, it all has to fit together. And so, I'm not sure we can just undo how that comes together, but, you know, maybe we should have a discussion with staff with what's working and what's not working before we pass judgment on what's working and what's not working, because I think we know bits and pieces of it, and we know what happened before Sean was here, we know what happened after Sean was here, because we had to contract for services both before and after, because we didn't have an assistant engineer. But what are the pieces that are missing to help us work together? And so, I'm a little concerned about saying it's not working and that there's a total separation, because I don't think there is with that.
Yeah, I guess I'm not saying that things aren't working. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that we have an opportunity to look at it.
To work better. Let's say they're not working, but to work more efficiently and to allow staff to be, come together creatively to work for, I mean, we're working on the comprehensive plan. We're working on, you know, public works ends up doing the playground equipment. How do they all fit back together to make sure that, you know, there is leadership there for those things and motivation to do things that haven't been done, perhaps, is a better way to say it.
Councilmember Osmus.
I agree with Councilmember Nelson about getting that information. I'm not exactly sure how we're going to do that, or how we would, who would gather that, and then how it gets disseminated to us. But of the, there's three employees, right, in engineering?
How many employees are in engineering?
Four employees, calling the administrative assistant, who does a lot of work for wastewater and public works and engineering.
Kelsey.
Yep.
Okay. So, okay, how many of those employees were around before Sean, when they had to figure things out, and after Sean? And to me, that would be a good gauge of, they saw what it was like when they did it contract, they saw what it was like when we had a full-time city engineer.
One employee.
Kelsey.
No.
Oh, okay.
There was an employee prior to Sean.
And he only served, he didn't serve the entire time that?
Pardon me?
He wasn't here that entire time?
Prior to Sean.
Right. So, from Holly?
Mel was hired.
Oh, Mel did. I thought, okay. I thought, okay.
Okay, so we only have one that can? Yep.
Well, I think what we're talking about doing here, and, I mean, nobody really wants to say it, but, I mean, this is, in my opinion, this is how you do good government, is that you have an opportunity in front of you, you look at that opportunity, and you say, is the way we did it right? Is the way we're proposing that we may do it differently right? Or is there a hybrid, kind of like what Councilmember Nelson just said? You know, can we pull all these pieces together and then get a better project? You know, I think back of, and again, I can only use my own experience, when I was fire chief, you know, and Mel Oden's left, and we really didn't have anybody, and, you know, the administrator at the time called me up and said, Mr. Chief, you're now over, you're now over all of facility maintenance. And my job one day was fighting fires and fire marshal work, and the next day, I was not only doing that, but I was doing facilities maintenance, and all the facility employees reported to me. And, I mean, that was done, I mean, that came to the council, but, I mean, he said, that's the recommendation I'm going to make, is that, you know, that the council approve you to be over all of facilities. Well, that's just what you do when you have to. Okay, after we got Sean back in, then those duties went back to the city engineer. So, I mean, those duties were disseminated out, but they worked. And, I mean, people were willing to say, okay, you know, I was working, you know, as John is working now, 55 hours a week, and now I'm going to work 65 hours a week, because that work has got to get done. You know, so that's just what you did. And, you know, and I remember when we had an exodus of firefighters. I mean, I mean, my wife probably loved it, but, I mean, I was at the fire station 24 hours a day for eight days in a row. I never left the fire station. I think my wife really loved that. But, I mean, you do what you have to do when you're given challenges, and that's what I think we have to do now. And I agree with what Audrey, I mean, Councilmember Nelson is saying, is that let's throw the bowl together and say, how can it look better? Councilmember Osmus.
My concern is, I always said that Mr. Christensen had, you know, a lot of things on his plate. And if we don't have somebody in that position, I look at, you know, he was the representative or was a major voice in the Highway 23 coalition, and then it was with the Y Project and being the face from the city that did a lot of the, had the presence there with all of the local option sales tax projects. And it, I kind of see that that position as a conduit for all of the little pieces that the city is involved with, that at least we had one person that knew what was going on in all those projects. If we just contract, how do we have that person again? Or how do we have that position that represents us? And then, maybe it's different people, but it just seemed like it was a good position to have, to know all of those different pieces and how the city fit with those.
Well, you have approved an assistant city administrator position. And in most cities, the tasks that you just mentioned would all have went to your assistant city administrator.
Right.
The administrator would have been briefed from your assistant city administrator on all of those projects, and there would have been collaboration between all of those pieces. So, what we've done is we've built an infrastructure that allows things to look differently.
Yep.
And, again, you don't want to hire that assistant, you know, I would speak very strongly against hiring an assistant city administrator prior to hiring your administrator, because those two individuals need to work hand in glove.
Right.
And, you know, so is it best to have a person with a engineering degree going to a meeting representing the council on local ops and sales tax? Or is it best, and I mean, I've had this discussion through the years, the last six years I've had this discussion, you know, is that the best use of that resource? And what I was commonly told by every administrator that we've had is that, Mr. Mayor, I have nobody to send. The only person I can send is Sean. I don't have anybody else I can send. And that's why I send Sean. You know, so we're trying to build, we're trying to build this system that kind of reports in a way that makes some sense, based on job, skill, and education. You know, our city planner did a lot of work as well with the Highway 23 stuff, you know, hats off to Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Plowman for the meetings that they attended. You know, I attended hundreds of hours of meetings in regards to the Y Project, and, you know, so a lot of people picked up pieces. So, this is just a conversation. So, and I hope I'm not sounding defensive.
At some point, do we want to have staff weigh in here?
Well, I think as the council, if we say that we want to have this discussion, I think then it goes out further. And, I mean, I have no problem having staff weigh in, but, I mean, I think that, I think you really want your administrator to lead that discussion with staff. You don't want the council going to staff and asking their opinion, because the administrator needs to build the plan that the administrator wants to move forward, and then staff falls in behind the administrator.
Sometimes I feel like we can go in circles, having this conversation at the table, and staff sits back there, and they know the answer, and they could contribute the information, but nope, they're not called on to give it. I mean, I would, if I was a staff person, I'd be like, I can help you there. But, so I just wanted to give them that opportunity if they could give some input into this discussion.
I think that input is needed. I'm just not sure that it's needed tonight.
Yep.
But if, but the council certainly can say they want that, and I'll act with this to that and say, okay, go ahead, ask staff. But I think, and I know Mr. Heron enough, that he wants to drive the message. He doesn't want, he wants the message to be clear. He doesn't want the message to go in eight directions. And that's been a little bit of the problem that we've had with our past administrators, is that people go around him. Councilmember Nelson.
I just want to remind us that our plate is full, and we need to keep the ship sailing. And so, whatever we need to do, I mean, we can't keep questioning if we're doing the right thing either, so, but I think our goal has to be to get an administrator in place with that. If we're doing these things, if we're going to put this on hold for a few weeks, you know, that's one thing, but I'm not sure we're, you know, we should, how much can we handle? And I think we have to do the first things first with that, but I also agree, we can't, if it's something that we don't want to do, then we need to stop and find a way to temporary do it until we can do something different.
Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sounds like we need to have a committee.
Anybody want to start the saw? I'm walking into the buzzsaw.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, I know, you know, you just asked, and I offered to fill in on a short-term basis here, and to address an earlier comment by Councilmember Fagerly. Our plates are full at WMU. We're asked to help, and if we can help, we'll help, but our plates are full. But to maybe help bring discussion to closure here, all good comments that everybody is making, all comments, concerns that should be addressed, and the comments that were made, to have your city administrator lead that, get a city administrator in place, I would suggest that that is the appropriate method, process to take. We do that here at the utility all the time. When we got an open position, we take a step back and say, what's working? Where's our strengths? Where are their weaknesses? Who on staff, you know, can fill those gaps? Where do we shift working duties around, and how do we switch them around to take advantage of what we have on staff or strengths? And then, we start looking at bridging our gaps. We do that with every position here at the utilities. The discussion you're having here is just normal over at the utilities every time we got an open position. And those discussions really start at staff, and they need to start at staff level. So, my suggestion would be to focus on your city administrator's position, fill the city administrator, and then direct the city administrator to work with your staff to come forward and try and address all those questions with a presentation on what makes the most sense. What are the pros and cons of the different types of scenarios that are available in completing all the duties and tasks and responsibilities that are needed within those functions? So, I don't believe you can make a decision tonight. You don't have enough information.
Councilmember Osmus.
I don't think we had any intention of making that decision tonight. I mean, I, we definitely know we have to fill the city administrator position first. And so, I was looking, I really thought we were looking two or three months out.
Right.
And just looking at some of the possibilities that we have, just having an open discussion this evening. But I do think we have a perfect opportunity here with both positions being open and how that could look. And so, I just, I don't feel like I have enough information of how the engineering department works, what the employees do, what they've done in the past, when they didn't have a city engineer. That's, before I can make a decision, that's where I'm at.
Right. Councilmember Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I had a conversation with the mayor about getting this on the agenda, I think my motivation for doing so was that we wouldn't lose that opportunity by hiring someone to fill that open position, you know, in the next couple of weeks. We're not going to make a decision tonight. I'll repeat that comment. But just to be able to hold the open positions and give us time to really examine this and see if it is the opportunity that it might be. Maybe it's not. Maybe we're, you know, look to hire a new city engineer and an assistant engineer down the road, but to at least hold that opportunity and not fill those positions at the moment is my goal.
Councilmember Osmus.
Part of that conversation, we had last council meeting, I had asked Mr. Christensen about the projects, the street projects and everything we have going on now, and he said, they're all done, you know, they've been bid, they're ready to go forward, and what there should be working on now is next year's projects. And so, my only question would be, if we take two or three or four months with this process, are we losing out on something that has to get done by next year? Or for next year?
I think that, you know, I think that that's some of the questions that have to come back, you know, once we have the administrator hired, you know, then, you know, you're always going to have capacity in the private entity. So, you know, like, so if we needed some things done, you know, if you went to one of our local providers and said, hey, we need you to draw this street, they would be able to do that. And that's what happened back in 2013. We needed the work done. They went to Bolton-Mink and Bowleg. I thought we used a third one too, but I can't remember who it was. Charlton Elliott?
Wastewater.
Yeah. No, that was Donahue. Donahue was the wastewater.
Well, Charlton Elliott before.
Right. Yep. And so, I mean, so we did use other contractors, so, I mean, so that's the way we can get it done. And I will say, what you just said a bit ago, or somebody said a bit ago, if we didn't have the administrator or the engineering position and the assistant engineering position open right now, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion.
Right.
Because it takes that option off the table. So, I mean, you're sitting, I mean, sometimes when you're, you have a gift horse sitting in front of you, you don't realize it, particularly if you don't explore it. And, I mean, everybody's plate's full, I understand that. Councilmember Ask. Did it already go to you? Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. We keep talking about engineering now too, but I think perhaps we need to look at what's in the job description for the public works director, because having been asked to be a part of interviewing for those candidates, I think that, to me, was a challenge to do the interview, to what are we looking for? And so, I would ask that that perhaps is the place that we start, that the council has, I mean, somewhere along the line, we need to have an understanding of that job description and how it fits in the pieces of the other, and that goes back to the organizational chart and to some of the other things. And we started a study. We asked staff. We did some of those things a few years ago, and so, maybe that's a document that should be reviewed also. But I think, I'm fine with, I'm fine with going down with this road, but I do think we need to stay focused on our first assignment, and that is to get an administrator. focused on our first assignment, and that is to get an administrator.
Councilmember Rob Ryan.
Well, I like what Councilman Julie had to say about bringing in staff and talking to staff. Because when I first came here, I tried to get some things done, I didn't know who to talk to. And the more phone calls I made, the more confusion I had. And I finally went out on my own, and, and I'm going to brag, we got Seven Street Crossing done. We got the River Road Crossing done. I was told that we had been trying to do that for two years. That's the information that I received. Okay? I want to talk to the staff. I want to find out exactly where do we go? When somebody calls, where does all this come? I've gotten so many calls about the streets in this town. I'm just being honest. But I continually get calls about the streets in Wilmer. And is it budget? Or is it something else? That's what we need to sit down and talk about. Why aren't these getting done? And, I mean, I, I don't want to be negative, but I'm just saying, I'm just telling you what the city tells me. They want their streets taken care of. They want these things done. And I don't have any answers for them. Basically, I go to call somebody, and somebody says, call them, and somebody says, call them, and somebody says, call them. And I don't get any answers. So I want to talk to the staff. I want to sit down and have us talk to the staff and find out exactly what needs to be done. What has been going on? And I certainly don't want to remove any of our staff, absolutely positively not. But boy, I tell you what, I really want to get, pick your brain, find out what's going on, see how we can help you. So, my two cents.
Okay. I think, I think we've kind of exhausted this. I think that there's an appetite to continue the discussion, from what I'm hearing. If there's not, this is your time to speak up and say, no, I don't think we should do this. Otherwise, we'll put this on the list of things to do when we have a new administrator. So I think this has been a good conversation. I think that this is healthy. This is what we should be doing. We should be talking as a group about what things look like and what they can look like. And I look forward to having these types of conversations in the future involving all of us at the table on what your desires are. And I had two council members contact me after the last council meeting and said, could we put this on the agenda? So I put it on the agenda. And so that's how we have the discussion. So if you have something you want, you know, get it to the administrator, get it to the mayor, you know, I had the request came to me. I went to the administrator. The administrator placed it on the agenda. So that's how it happened. With that, I'll go to community pride events that are going on. Rob, kudos to your staff for the event yesterday out at the Civic Center. I had so many emails and so many phone calls and people just talking about how well it went. So I'm not sure if it went that well. But, boy, I tell you, from the calls I got, it, I mean, you guys hit a home run in 97-degree temperatures. You know, I was getting the questions, there's no air conditioning. What am I going to do? What am I going to do? And I said, well, I've been told there is air conditioning. So, but anyways, so my understanding is things went very well. So thank you for your staff. Gary Manzer, I had a report that someone had hit their boat motor on a rock out on one of the lakes. And your staff was out there within, I believe that, I was told that you were out there within an hour and had it marked with buoys, and had done everything that was requested to make sure that someone else didn't hit their boat. So I appreciate that as well. So, you know, our staff is doing good work. We're asking a lot of them. We're missing two department directors plus an administrator. And we've got the administrator position filled, the stopgap, phase one. And John has agreed to step up to the plate to help us with that. But, you know, Brian was there for 40 hours a week plus, probably. And we're going to have John for 10 hours on a strong week, and he's hoping it's less than that. So we got to not add to his plate. But John, thank you for stepping up to the plate. And I know that as you do very well, you'll be delegating down to people that work with you. And so your staff, too, thank them for allowing us to have you. And as Councilmember Nelson said, you know, thank the commission, too. I did talk with Justin Mattern a couple times. And so, you know, so I knew that he was on board as well. So, but thank you all. So does anybody else have any community announcements they'd like to make? Councilmember Fagerley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The youth baseball tournament is this week. They are full, and it's ages nine to 14. Hotels are jam-packed, so it should be good for the community. Starts Friday, goes to Sunday.
Awesome. Good work. Good work.
Do we have the fire department helping out with misters?
Probably need something for that. So, yeah. Anybody else have any community announcements?
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned.